Councillors who haven't seen this, of course, the previous councillors probably saw that at all of their meetings, but that's what this is. And you'll notice that the, it'll change depending, they're kind of smart cameras, depending who's talking. The cameras will switch to that, so if we have a presentation, then it will go to that person who's presenting. Or if we have questions, it'll go to the person asking questions. So that's what that's all about behind us there. And I'm not sure what kind of numbers we have watching it, but it is open to the public or anybody that wants to to tune in and watch. Okay, so just a land acknowledgement that we're meeting in the, Anubik is in the Witsen Settlement area. And we're, we're happy to be meeting here and remember the significance of the land to the Witsen and the Anubik Alwet and other indigenous people that are in the area. And we work towards a respectful and collaborative relationship with all indigenous peoples in the area and all community members. So we, we look forward to our continued relationships with everybody and building on those so that we are coming together as a community, working in the same direction, working to build a better community. And with that, the first thing we're going to do is the swearing in of Councillor Merrill and Councillor Raymond, who were not able to make the swearing in ceremony. And so if the two of you can go down to the end of the table there, it's all been set up and we'll do that so that everybody's, everybody's official.
There's a story behind this. Basically, you are the compass giving us direction and we are the engine behind you.
And you know, it's always forty degrees off and you're leaving, right?
Exactly, exactly. So I'll just get you to read that, then sign it and Adam will notarize it.
All right. I, Alan Merrill, affirm that I will fulfill the duties entrusted to me as a councillor for the town of Anubik to the best of my ability. I will act with integrity, honesty and transparency, ensuring that my decisions reflect the best interests of our community, both now and in the future. I will listen to the voices of the people I represent, strive for equity, inclusivity and sustainability. And we're deliberately promote the welfare and safety of our community.
There's your, also your own information. Thank you. And I will get you to do the same.
I, Kirk Wayman, affirm that I will fulfill the duties entrusted to me as a councillor for the town of Anubik to the best of my ability. I will act with integrity, honesty and transparency, ensuring that my decisions reflect the best interests of our community, both now and in the future. I will listen to the voices of the people I represent, I strive for equity, inclusivity, sustainability. And we're deliberately promote the welfare and safety of our community.
Great. Thank you and welcome, Councillor Merrill, Councillor Raymond. Yep, a couple of information items, just as far as council proceedings, as we move forward for the new councillors. On council decisions, we will have a a motion and a seconder, and then that brings it onto the table, then we will have the discussion. And then, and then we will vote in favor or against whatever the council, request for council decision is. So that's just the procedure that, that will follow. Information items don't require that. That will be just an information item and we're not making a decision on it. And so we, we don't need a mover and seconder to have that discussion. So as we're, as we're moving, moving forward, and this is our first meeting, we'll, we'll make sure staff will remind us. Oh, you need to make a motion on that before you can start discussing it. Okay, the other thing I want to just provide some additional information on as, because some of these items will be new in, in that as we're moving forward. All of you received a digital package, which was seventy-seven pages for the council meeting. And we'll just, Jenna would like some feedback whether you're you're continuing to be satisfied with the digital copy. If you want a printed copy, if that makes it easier for you to read the package or bring the package to council meetings, we can also do that. So please give that feedback to Jenna at some time at the, at the end of the meeting. And, or afterwards, just so that she knows and then can, you know, make that, make that appropriate package. Because we, we want it to be as easy as possible for, for people. The other thing we have at each meeting, we will declare a conflict of interest. But we are also going to have a written declaration of that, so that will be on file. So if the SAO or somebody says, well, so-and-so shouldn't have been at that meeting or something because they have a conflict of interest with that item, we've actually got the written record of what the conflict of interests are. And then that, that question can be, you know, can be answered, no, sorry, they, they don't own any part of that business. Or they're no longer involved, or, or yes, you know, they, they are a part of that and they excuse themselves during that discussion. So we will cast those out and again, you can fill this out at some point and then get it back to Jenna. And all of us will, will fill that out. And if you don't have any potential conflicts with anything, the town is, is going to be at the meetings. I mean, you can also just do this that. Yeah. So December sixth is the town Christmas party. And so we will, the, the town council and all the staff are invited to that. But on the, the seventh or the eighth, we need to have a budget meeting. So I'm leaving it to council, would the Saturday be better for that? Or, you know, Sunday off? Or do you want to take Saturday off after the Christmas party and then meet on Sunday? Because that will be a meeting that will require your attention, will be going through the budget for twenty twenty-five. In that our fiscal year starts January first. So any, any previous commitments on the Saturday or Sunday that you would like to have one date or the other? Councillor Merrill.
I am going to be traveling into town for the fifth and up back until the afternoon of the seventh. Makes it an important difference.
Okay, so you're saying you would prefer it on the Sunday then?
I would.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Kirk?
I'm leaving town on the Sunday, so the Saturday is Wednesday.
Okay, so you, you will be leaving on the Sunday. Okay. Anybody? What, why don't we just do, we may not get everybody there, but we can, we can certainly make sure everybody has the information so that, I mean, it's not our last review, but it's the first opportunity we get to look at the entire budget picture. How many people would prefer to have it on the Saturday? How many councillors prefer to have the meeting on the Saturday? One. Okay. How many would prefer to have it on the Sunday?
It don't matter.
Don't matter to you? Okay. It looks like we'll be, we'll have the meeting on the Sunday. And are you leaving on the plane in the afternoon? So we'd certainly like you to show up. If you can't show up in the morning, that would be great. And we can, we can move through the, the bigger items and, and information items and budget pieces in the morning. So that, that allows you to have as much input as possible. Yeah.
And there won't be any surprises. We'll share the package beforehand, should you have any questions. We won't spring it all on you at nine o'clock on a Sunday morning.
Okay, as far as notice go to meetings, certainly you'll see in your package, you've got all of the council meetings for twenty-four and twenty-five and some of the other special meetings that you have that we know we're going to have, like the councillors' training meetings on the twenty-third.
So that is that green calendar that Jenna would have provided for you on paper. Those are the things that are scheduled coming up, up until the end of December.
Yeah.
So that's the remaining twenty twenty-four scheduled meetings.
And on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, this is council orientation. And we know we have, in a sense, five returning councillors that may have had that before. So we're going to talk with Maka and to see whether we can have the orientation that is more for the new members. And then the second day will be new stuff that will be for everybody, just so we don't have to waste some entire Saturday if they've already seen some of the information already. So Jenna will be getting back to everybody on, on that schedule and sending out the schedule. And this is what's going to happen on Saturday and this is what will happen on the Saturday.
That's actually a good segue into Jenna's communication with council?
That, yeah, yeah, that would be very good. So your conduit into the town office, the designated person for that is Jenna. And so if you're not getting something or you have some questions about some of the information, because Jenna's the controller of that as, as it, as it comes out. So if there is information or questions about the council package, make sure you get back to Jenna. And then also, just want to confirm, is, is everybody up on their Anubik CA email? Everybody's good with that? No? Okay, so, but talk to Jenna because she can, she can continue to email to your personal email if, if that works better for you. And then as, as, as you get more comfortable with the Anubik dot CA, then you can let her know, okay, I'm, I'm good. You don't have to send it to me. Councillor Merrill?
On past councils, I've actually been connected, so it was automatically for a personal, is that still possible?
Brock said that you may be able to send group emails to personal emails. But like, so what did you want me to do?
So in, in, sometimes in the past, what we've done is if we went to Anubik dot CA, it actually went to
So you just want them forwarded?
Yeah.
And I don't, the previous SAO was able to do that. I can ask about it. I think it's a setting within your email address, your email account.
Okay, just letting you know, okay.
Okay, I will thank you.
Okay, there's some other items, but there, there's a, at the end of the, near the end of the council meeting, there's a opportunity for council comments slash information items. And we'll, we'll cover some of these other items at, at that point. So moving on with the item number two, adoption of the agenda, we need a mover and seconder for that. Moved by Councillor Barilic, seconded by Councillor Merrill. Any further discussion on the agenda? Anything else we need to add in there? There, there, there will be more detail on, on a couple of the items that will be there, but it'll, it'll fall under the, under the current council, under the current agenda. I'm seeing anything further? All in favor of the agenda? Are those in favor? All right, that's passed. Declaration of conflict of interest or recunerary interest with any of the agenda items. Councillor Barrett?
I'd like to declare perceived conflict of interest with items nine-one and nine-two, as I'm an employee of the corporation that's associated with the items.
Okay, oh, so during that presentation, then you get to have a break.
Yeah.
And usually what happens is you just either dig out one door or the other, we'll post it on there.
Okay. Any further conflicts of interest? Okay, thanks. Delegation, presentation, repetitions. We don't have any of those, which is going, the rest of the presentations are covered during the bigger council meeting. Item number five, public question period. This is always at the Wednesday of the meeting. Oops, sorry.
I should also declare conflict on nine-one and nine-two.
Okay.
Just because I'm not a board member, they need to have a correction.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah, good point. Yeah, getting familiar with everyone's side job, they're going to take a meeting or two, so.
You'll have a few side jobs.
Yeah, yeah, so. Okay, this is normally the council meeting, we didn't have committee of the whole on Monday because of the holiday. So this is the council meeting where the public can come and ask questions of council or, or operations. So just looking at there, any questions from the public? Oh, I think we're good to go. Okay. Item number six, the adoption of the minutes, minutes from the October ninth, twenty twenty-fourth council meeting. If we have councillors that were here at that meeting, those would be the best ones to move and second. Moved by Councillor Merrill, seconded by Councillor Day. Did either of you see any, any errors or omissions in the, in the minutes? Okay, so no, no, no changes required. Because the rest of, I don't know, Councillor Wayman about that meeting, but no, he wasn't, he was absent. So the rest of us weren't at the meeting, so. Okay, we've got a mover and seconder, all in favor? And there were no action items identified for from those meetings. Eight-one is the of the decade four for twenty twenty-five is your meeting schedule. Typically, the second Monday and Wednesday and the fourth Monday and Wednesday of each month. And you'll see some of them in the summer have an asterisk. If we don't have the, the number of agenda meeting items for that meeting, then we won't have the meeting. And then there's some holidays, which then also take out the odd Monday. Okay, so that, that's an information item, so everybody can put that into their planning.
Actually, they have to make a motion to approve.
Oh, we have to approve the, oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, that's because also it's, so what we're doing is approving that that is agreeable with everybody. Right, moved by Councillor Lemieux, seconded by Councillor Barilic. All in favor? Okay. Eight-two. So we do need a request for council decision for this, also to appoint the deputy mayor, so. I guess do we need the motion and then we identify, or do we?
Yeah, so you mover and a seconder, you have that discussion?
Okay.
And then you make the motion?
With the person then?
With the person's name?
Yeah, okay. So mover and seconder for this, and then we'll, we'll discuss who it is. Okay. Moved by Councillor Wayman, seconded by Councillor Parrot. Discussion. So the tradition has always been with the town of Anubik, the councillor with the most votes during the election would become deputy mayor. And this is Councillor Barilic for the, again, second time, it was also a third time, okay, so three terms. He's, he's received the most votes, so that would be, would be deputy mayor, would be as, as by tradition. Any further discussion, any further comments? We do have to ask, Councillor Barilic, are you okay with that? Yes, okay. No further discussion, comments? All in favor? All right, that's passed. The next motion is to, or request for council decision, appointment of the assistant deputy mayor. And let's have a motion to get this on the table, moved by Councillor Barilic, seconded by Councillor Lemieux. Okay, the assistant deputy mayor, in, in the event that the mayor and the deputy mayor were out of town, the assistant deputy mayor would then take over that, that position. The second highest vote, so we went to Councillor McDonald. Yeah, yeah. So Councillor McDonald, are you willing to accept the assistant deputy mayor's position?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Passed. Eight-four is a request for council decision. On, on the holiday light up, judges, I guess this is an appointment, so.
We'll put it on the table and then we look for which councillors want to be the judges. And then we appoint them to the, be judges.
So mover and seconder, and then we'll point, okay. Moved by Councillor McDonald, seconded by Councillor Merrill. So these are just two judges that will go around with the town staff and look at the Christmas light decorations. And as you can see from the information package, there's cash rewards for five, five of the places. Do we have a couple of volunteers that would like to do that? And that's one evening? Yeah, one evening. Councillor Day, you would like to be one of the judges? And Councillor Lemieux?
Yeah.
Okay. So Councillor Day, Councillor Lemieux will be the two judges. All in favor? Passed. Same thing with the community purification, item eight-five. Get it on the table, moved by Councillor McDonald, seconded by Councillor Merrill. We have two volunteers and this is, what's the date?
Happens around August.
Oh, okay. And, and again, you can see that there's prize money for business and commercial and residential. A couple of volunteers for that?
What the hell?
One more volunteer. Councillor McDonald, perfect. Appreciate stepping up, all in favor? Okay. Now, this is going into request, eight-six, request for council decision. This is a request for a variance for the, by the NITAT council, conditional use of, of phase two, NITAT tiny home village, the central facility and daycare. And so
A mover and a seconder?
Yes, mover and seconder, and then we will have that discussion, but we also have a presentation. And so moved by Councillor Barilic, seconded by Councillor Day.
Mayor, did you want me to explain what a, what a
Yeah, I think that even though everyone's seen the package, I, I think it would be useful before the discussion is just to have our SAO explain what the process we're going through. And then I believe Kelly from the NITAT is going to make the presentation. And we also have his contractor, Matt, online to answer any questions that Kelly can't answer. So we're going to get more information on it, but I think it's probably useful for the SAO to explain what we're doing in this variance.
Okay, so when we are, we're talking specifically about our community plan and our zoning bylaw. So within the town of Anubik, you'll see that map over there. The map actually shows different types of development. So we have commercial development, we have residential development, and there's certain zones within the community that are designated. So in the case here, each of those zones have kind of an itemized list of acceptable buildings or permitted buildings. So if, for instance, you wanted to put a, a store, a commercial building in a commercial zone, you wouldn't need necessarily council's permission to do that because it is permitted within our written bylaw. So in the case right now, the, the village that we are talking about here that is, that is up for discussion, it is in a commercial zone and it is not in that list of permitted. But what it is in the list for is a conditional use. So that is simply a one-vote decision to say yes, even though it's not on the list of things that are given presumptive. It's still allowable and it's a similar type of building and occupancy that we can just give a conditional use for. So that is something very, it's just a one vote, yes, even though it doesn't quite fit in that, it's still a similar enough use that we can allow that to, that we agree to allow that to happen. So that is the one that's being forward now. It gets more complicated when it's a totally different type of building in a zone where we might have to change a zone, but that's going to come up and I'll explain it to you in the next presentation. But for, because that involves bylaw revisions, but this one is simply, it doesn't fit in that list, but it's similar enough that we can agree for it to happen. Yes.
So does that include the residences that would be there? So we're just talking about the building that would be the daycare and the offices?
Correct, yes. And the reason why we are doing it this way is because it is, because the entire village itself with the residences, it would take some major revisions to the bylaw to do that. So in working with the development officer, it was okay, first phase one, now phase two, that'll buy us some time. And NITAT have time to develop their plans to move it forward. So this is, this is the, the second in a phase of three. Right, okay.
And this also, I mean, one, that we're supportive, but it also allows the NITAT to begin some of the groundwork to get things set so that they can capitalize on building season next year. So that, that's what this is about, so. I guess Kelly, if you're ready for the presentation, we'll bring that up for, and then Oh, okay.
Thanks for sending me the invite. I'll share my screen. Nice to see some folks again and new folks and best of luck on your new vocation to town council.
I'll just find some things of mayor need in the discussion. That's an updated one, okay, that one's present. Oh.
Let's see, uh, members from. Yeah, it was you. Matt has a newborn.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, so Masichow, um, for allowing me to present here today and um apologies, um. We weren't able to make it to the swearing ceremony for, for everyone, uh, who go to town on that, but um. Uh, congratulations to everyone on their election and we look forward to. Working with you folks on many different levels in the community here, so. All the best in your, your term. The NITAT tiny home village, so today we're asking for a variance as. As Joe has mentioned, um, our facility, potentially the central programs facility. We believe it fits certain criterias. Um, that could fit today for permitting uses, but there is one. The childcare component that we've built into the facility. Line or slash. Good from there, Jenna. There you go. So. That straddles the line of um, uh, uh, full blown daycare, which our facility is not, it's not a full blown public daycare. It's a wraparound service component to the transitional community that we're building and um. So. It'll be to this council's discretion, um. There are certain components to the central facility that we believe currently fit, which is the programs and services and support services. But there's also the component of the childcare, which. Is a childcare component to the programming and services that the central facility is going to offer. It's not a full blown daycare. So, um, we're not going to be competing with the daycare in the community or adding another public daycare. It's a daycare to support the users of the transitional community. Questions thus far?
The only comment, I would make, you wouldn't be competing with anybody, there's a huge shortage of. Daycare, childcare services, so. Anything that could be brought on would be useful for sure.
The competition would not be our goal, it's to support the users of the facility. If there's a um vacancy or something, I'm sure we would look at trying to support the community as a whole, one hundred percent. But the facility itself is designed to support the transitional users of the facility.
Council Berwick, do you have a question?
Just seeking clarity on that, are you intending to secure licensing associated with the facility under the Childcare Act that came into play in twenty twenty three?
If we're required to as a, as a programs and support services, then we will. But as I mentioned, we're not looking to become a full blown daycare.
Would there be a cost associated with the facility or would it be incorporated as free and integrated with the transition?
It's be free. Yeah. But one component to this, this whole program is um, we were able to secure twenty, twenty years of, of operational funding. Along with the option to renew for another twenty years. So potential forty years of operation out of this facility that's being federally funded. After the capital bill.
Would the intention though be to meet the regulations that were associated with the act? Or is this something that would be at a later date?
To be honest, that's a way bigger question than I can answer today, but. In the way that we're not intending to be a full blown daycare, but more of offering programs and services, and that's one of them. That's gonna support the clients of the facility.
Makes sense. My line of questioning is around constituting if this is a business or not.
No, it's not. It's not a, it's not a for profit business.
So, Council Merrill?
So Kelly, would this be a place where the children are attending while the parents are doing programming, other work, they're doing their own growth, is that the intent?
That is the intent. Wonderful idea. More questions?
Yeah, Councilman Wayman, let's see your capacity of people here with the tiny homes and buildings in the room, how many people are gonna meet the capacity of this place?
The facility itself, so the, the, there's six, so the central facility or are we talking about?
All of it together.
So today. Specific to the central facility, the capacity like overnight occupancy, there's, there's no overnight occupancy in the central facility. But if we're gonna shift gears and talk about the whole facility, because of my understanding is we're. Discussing the variance for the central facility today.
The reason I'm asking is that I'm wondering about your parking capacity.
So we have a plan for that. So we own the lot kitty corner to the utilitor that is. Highly sought after for other projects, but we plan to turn that into parking as well to support the facility.
Sorry, just to clarify, you're talking about this lot right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So a lot on Mackenzie and then your facility you're talking?
Yeah, we have, we have parking built into the facility as well. There's a certain number, I don't know if it's on in these slides, just because. As a whole, we were presenting that in phase three. But to support the need for parking, we would be developing a parking lot on, on the main road to support the facility.
Well, I'll go ahead with the presentation because we get into some of the layout and stuff like that, and that'll probably answer some of the questions anyway, so. Why don't you continue with the presentation?
For sure. Any other questions on this far? Did that answer your question?
I carry on, I'm just trying to read to you.
Let me just, one question and, and I've looked at, at the layout here and. Is, is any of that space? Uh, uh, between the, the, the main center and the tiny home, because as we go around, I, I know we're not. We're not approving that at this point, but um, just when you're laying out there just for other information. Is any of that vehicle accessible?
No.
Okay.
No, it's a green space. It's designed to support the um, users of the facility, the children. And the families with a green space, there's a potentially a playground there, but um, picnic tables, yeah, just, just a. An inviting recreational area, yeah.
The only thing I guess we would recommend at, at some point, and we, we don't need to do it now because we're not approving the entire site, that'll, that'll come later. But that we can meet with protective services and determine how that site. Would be protected from something like a fire at, at some location, and I, I was on the site today and we do have. I think it's two fire hydrants and the existing utilitors, but I think it would just be good for. Protective services and yourself to be able to work out if there was a fire. In a tiny home or, you know, somewhere on the site, this would be the plan for, for fighting that fire. Because we wouldn't be able to get the fire trucks past Franklin or coming the other way, we're in the. Corporate, in the way out, corporate center parking lot, so we're just looking at, at safety and access to that site.
Sure, Masie, thanks. So the, the facility itself is um, like the central programs facility itself is roughly six thousand square feet. It's a um, multi-level facility, two level, um, downstairs, we've built in. Um, a hall, counseling rooms, a full kitchen area. Upstairs, we've built in offices, more counseling rooms and the daycare component, you know, to the, 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 the west side, I guess, of the. The building there. On the top floor, there's um, two rooms there that we are going to use for, for the childcare component. And any other uses, to be honest, um. Anything that's developed for programming services in the facility will be delivering in all these rooms. Any questions? Thus far?
Yeah, Kelly, I'm just wondering, looking at the, the floor plans, you obviously got a fair amount of plumbing and stuff like that in there. You gotta find to get back to the main utility line?
Yes. Yeah, we do, we're gonna be tying into the east side of the, the lot.
Okay.
And uh, the central facility itself is on a triodetic foundation. And then um, naturally we'll be grading the lot to, I think, uh, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, two or three percent. Grade for the drainage and the sewage.
Yeah, correct, associate engineering, uh, is the engineer involved? That's coordinating the grading heights with the utilitor, uh, invert elevations. We had that exercise sort of similarly to another development totems working on over in the Carmichael area, but uh, yeah. Associate engineering ourselves are, have worked on a coordinated grading and utilitor design. Based on the current grades and street grades there off Franklin Road.
And the other components to the, the first level floor is um, laundry room, to be able to support the users of the facility. Um, with that, um, each of the. Jumping back to the tiny homes, but each of the tiny homes has, has their own um, laundry facilities, but. Further support is trying to offer sort of a one stop shop in the, in the central facility.
Kelly or Matt, in most commercial buildings now that have a second floor. Where accessibility, do you require a lift in that building?
Question Matt is gonna have to answer.
Oh, we do have to have the main floor fully accessible and barrier, barrier free according to the CMHC requirements. The upper level at the moment doesn't based on the code that applies, but. We are gonna go the extra step and look at accessibility, um, obviously for the kids' sake. There's various things we could do, uh, whether it's a, a, an adapted, um, oh, mechanical chair at the stair. But there's also newer um, conveying devices that you can uh, tie into that open foyer there. Uh, which is right adjacent to the childcare facility. In terms of the project funding and the code requirements, just level one uh, needs to be barrier free.
Masie, Matt, um. Yeah, so like we've built in. Kind of everything we think into that central facility that. The users of the transitional community will need to support them in their, in their journey, um. We don't have it all figured out today, but um, you know, through our partnerships with the tribal council. Who's gonna be developing a lot of the programming for the facility, um, we hope to have. Well, we, we better have it figured out before we open, um, but again, this is a unique concept. It's a unique idea, it's innovative, um, some have done it, you know, across Canada and other places, the, the, the. The tiny home brand concept, um, the Yukon has done it in Whitehorse, but they don't have a central programs facility. Um. You know, they were, they were one of the people that are folks that we reached out to early on to understand. Some of the challenges and, and other areas for improvement of their facility that, that we could build into ours. And the central programs facility is, we believe is going to be um. Instrumental in, in the whole program.
I'll only add, while the programming and, and how those services are uh, outlaid when the building's uh, operational. Uh, design and coordination of phase one, two and three is uh, well sort of planned out. Because this is CMHC funded, it's quite consultant heavy, uh, so we have associate engineering. Doing the, the grade and utilitor design, and we have camp for engineering um, onboard as a code consultant. We have a First Nation architect, uh, Patrick Arts, our steward, uh, assisting with the architectural design with the modular builders. Um, we have energy modeling done by NR Can advisors as required by CMHC. So a lot of thought and coordination, design wise, has gone into this to meet the end use of the NITAT and the women and children. Um, who are gonna be using this facility, a lot of it is predicated, not just on this phase two approval, but the next phase. Um, so the development officer did want us to show the future pad layouts. Uh, but it's gonna be a bit of a more extensive and detailed process when we get to phase three. Um, working with your development officer as we amend uh, the bylaws and zoning map. And that's where I think the mayor had mentioned, where a lot of other things come to play, like we have in a council, uh, Wayman there. We have the parking there with the accessible parking spot as well. We also have the fire truck access uh, for firefighter app, uh, for that main route there, right before the playground. And then we have our code consultant there reviewing the design of the tiny homes, once we get to, to that part of it. In the next step, following this, where we look at. Um, where the homes are side by side, you have non combustible cladding, and you might have the steel studs. Uh, on those walls, just in case there is a fire, so our consultant team has uh. Already begun looking at this, we're just sort of waiting to get to that next step to begin working with the town. Through your development officer to, to work out phase three, which will be the tiny home, um. Phase of the, of the project that you see around the perimeter of the, the site plan.
Masie, Matt, um, it's a lot of moving pieces. Fast, we expect, you, you know, we've hit an aggressive target of October twenty twenty five. Uh, we believe we're going to be open in June, July, um, just on the, the um. Methodology we've taken with this project and um. You know, we're asking for this council support in doing that and um. You know, we, we understand it's not checking some of the boxes somewhere. But uh, we believe this council has the discretion to um, support this project.
Kelly, just to further on um, the earlier question of parking, I know it's not relatively relevant to, to the decision, but. That kitty corner lot that you looking at parking. How is, how is, how are they gonna get to the site that, that utilitor is right there, and then you cut? Kitty corner for IDC's property and to homeowners property right there, was there a plan of how people from the parking lot? I'm basically a worksite, I'm thinking, if you're gonna have so many, here's that, we just do it.
So my understanding of the, the, the current parking arrangement at the, the facility itself is, it's adequate for the staff. That's there every day. Um, the additional parking lot is just going to be additional and supportive of the facility. For say tenants that are in the facility and they have vehicles. And um, they don't need to be accessing them daily, um, and there's just that added support.
So where is the staff parking that's not in that?
Oh, um, I don't know if it's super.
It'd be the front, frontage of the building there, this gravel pad. In the west, southern west area.
Yeah.
That's where we built it in now, but.
Yeah, a lot of this, to jump in. Again, we were asked to show the tiny home village here, the central facility itself, that large rectangular building is all that's really for consideration. For this permit, so essentially that entire site could be parking. Um, so the parking in conjunction with the tiny homes will have to get looked in more depth as we amend the bylaws. We'll have to get looked in more depth as we amend the bylaws with your development officer. Um but right now, we have the the southwest area allocated for uh parking. Uh and the one unique aspect of this project is that um the capital costs are funded by CMHC. But Indigenous Services Canada uh has funded a co-op vehicle for the women using this facility. So there's intention of having a um a shared co-op truck or SUV that the women can take. Go to job interviews, um go to classes or what have you. So um Indigenous Services Canada actually funded a vehicle. For the most part, likely, some of these women may not have vehicles, uh but the intention to have is to have a spot there for the government funded co-op vehicle.
Must see Matt, um I understand and appreciate the parking concern. I think it always comes off the council parking new developments, um we believe, you know, how however. Um people make it from our parking lot to there, we'll be able to solve that relatively easily. Um if it's walking or if there's an over utilidor access bill. Um we're just not there today because we were under the impression that we were presenting on the central facility today. But appreciate the question, then we'll we'll definitely be able to answer it in more detail on phase three if we make it. Phase three.
Counselor Bear, against Counselor Wayman.
Um back to the discussion about the daycare space, noting that it's on the second floor of the central building and noting that there may be issues of accessibility. In the event that there are many small children and evacuation is a concern, how do you intend to account for that? And including individuals who will be too young to walk or will be able to evacuate themselves.
You mean our co-consult, what, I'll let Kelly answer first and jump in?
Yeah, so my understanding of um in in the event of an emergency, any um elevators, accessible chairs and stuff like that. Not allowed to be used anyway, so the the existing stairs and stuff that we would have in place, um those would be the primary use for. An emergency situation, um but we would be developing emergency plans in in support of that.
My question was more speaking to ratios, so the ratios about children in the facility.
Yeah, so that's part of why you see on the design, the two double doors exiting the building. And then you also have those side exits, um so what you do during the design of it, the co-consultants look at travel pass. Uh in the building itself, we'll have a fire alarm system. Um and like Kelly said, even if you have an elevator there, once the fire alarm's triggered, it goes to the fireman's recall floor. Uh but this entire project will be on a fire alarm system. And even though we're not talking about it, that panel will have tie-ins to the tiny homes. Cause the concern from our consult code consultant was what if the fire is not at the central facility, which is easy, obviously, for the firefighters to respond to first. So once we get into that part of it, the tiny homes will have uh like a siren and light combo. So that if there's a fire uh over um one of the tiny home residences, it will send a signal to the main panel at the central facility. Uh but then obviously, sometimes it's easier just to see for the firefighters a light at that door of that specific tiny home unit. So a lot of um these life safety items, we we have started going through already. Um but which is why you see these multiple exits on level one.
Yeah, and I I think those are, you know, good safety questions, but it's also not a jurisdiction that we will be involved in. Or or enforcing in the fire marshal or uh ECE or who who's ever responsible, depending on at what level the the wraparound care. So that that at least certainly something the NITAT will work out, but it's not something that would be a a condition of our approval. Which is basically, does the building fit on the lot? But it it is certainly a larger concern and probably a bigger concern than the NITAT.
Must see, and must see for the questions, and like I mentioned before, we don't have it all figured out. So the questions that you ask are, they they inform our decisions later and we appreciate them. And although they might not be your jurisdiction, they're still going to help us in the future, so.
Any other questions for Kelly or Matt, oh sorry, Counselor Wayman, yes.
Who owns the lots, do you own lots directly behind this building? Or is your lot, your tub over parking it off of this side?
Kitty cor- kitty corner to the, we don't own the lot right behind it, it's kitty corner, so. Right over kitty corner, we own that one.
So it's not a, it's not attached to your lot?
Technically, it's kitty corner.
There's no further questions, we've got a motion on the floor. And what we're doing is approving conditional use for the.
Central building.
Central building, and then it will come back to us in a zoning change or whatever for phase three. So that that will be the tiny homes, which we can't give a conditional use of at this point, because it doesn't fit within commercial. But our development officer, Peter Schultz, is working with Matt, working with Kelly and working with town administration. To look at what changes we need to make in order to get to phase three.
Just to add to that if I may, is um our facility wholly fits within the town's proposed zoning and bylaw. Changes that are still in draft form and it's our understanding of the basis of other changes are predicated on that they fit. You know, the future plans of the municipality, so that's the way we've designed this facility as well as the not very many municipalities. Or how much are villages that that speak to a tiny home village in the territory? So we understand that it's it's unique our request.
Yeah.
Today.
Yeah, and we'll get there, but it's just gonna take some some time to get there. But at least we can get the project going and get some groundwork done and start moving forward. So if there's no further questions to Kelly or Matt. Gonna call for the, those in favor of the conditional use. Motion carries, so.
I see.
We've got the conditional use to uh begin some of the groundwork to get things going. And then we'll continue to work with our development officer and our staff um as we move for forward into uh phase three. And um yeah, and I think uh kudos to the NITAT for addressing another social issue in the community. And I think the more, the more that we can do to support people in the community, the better. So thanks again, and we look forward to seeing phase three.
See, much appreciated.
Thank you all, thanks for the invite, thank you.
Okay, moving along, eight, seven requests for council decision to begin discussions about Anubis Works. Moved by Counselor Merrill, seconded by Counselor Day. Okay, what what this is, um it was discussed at the candidates forum, was discussed at other times. And just basically permission from council for myself, for town staff to start meeting with the. Indigenous governments in town, the the NITAT, the Community Corp, the Anubis Native Band, uh any of the other leadership. Uh to meet with ECE and to look at potential territorial funding, uh federal funding. And what we can do to um initiate a Anubis Works program. Similar to what was in the early two thousands, where the town, IRC and GTC had an Anubis Works program for several years. And many of you who've been around that long will remember Royal Panda was the foreman. And they would go around and do stuff for elders, do stuff for the town, do stuff for the indigenous groups. And we just wanna see whether we can pull that program back uh together and work with everybody. But to benefit some of those people who are having challenges entering the job market and maybe don't have a bank account. Maybe, you know, aren't set up to even, you know, accept money if they were working, so that that's what this program's about. And at this point, it's not costing us any money, it's just discussions with all the groups. ECE has already offered us money to begin the, some of the discussions about the program. But we've said, we don't need any money at this point, we just wanna, first thing we need to do, and I mentioned it briefly to Kelly in a meeting we had last week. But we'll meet with the Anubis Community Corp, the Anubis Band, um and see what the interest is. And then see how we can work together and pull it together. But I didn't want myself and and town staff going out on a limb, spending a lot of time and not have the support of council, so that's why it's before you. Questions? Counselor Barilak and then Counselor Merrill.
Um no particular question, I guess I'll just speak in favor of the motion, I know this is something that's come up on several councils before. Uh the previous iteration of program, I thought people saw a lot of value in and wanted to see it kind of come back. So I definitely think it's worthwhile to have some discussions, start exploring some options. So again, I'll, you can favor the motion when the vote comes.
Counselor Merrill.
The next uh Anubis drinks, and you know, next Wednesday the twentieth, can I suggest you come to that and make your case there, one fifteen. And then the villains, they were in the library.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, again, I think it's a great idea, just uh in the background, do you know why the program or the, was it funded? Uh funding that had stopped and that would happen to the?
Yeah, I don't know exactly why it ended. I know that most of the funding for the staff and for the the participants was coming through programs that IRC and GTC had. The town was providing facility, a truck and and some support, so I'm not exactly sure why it ended, but.
I think it was mine.
Money?
I think so.
Yeah.
I would imagine, but yeah, the program funding has ended, I believe.
Yeah, that that could have been part of it, uh interestingly, Kelly and I were talking last week. Uh when Rory Budrick was with the Community Corp, Kelly and Rory were discussing how to how to get it going again. And then unfortunately, Rory passed and it um, you know, it it didn't get traction. So we're hoping we can can at least talk to everybody, we want to see if there's the interest and then see how we can make it happen. Any further questions? Those in favor? Motion carried. Hey, nine, one is the. First readings for the amendment of the bylaw for the community ban plan to allow the construction of a new ho- hotel similar to the old Eskimo Inn. So we will um deal with with nine, one first, so mover and seconder. Moved by Counselor Barilak, seconded by Counselor Lemieux. Oh, yes, we have the conference declaring, so. Yeah, I'll open and just close the door after then, Counselor Barilak. Now we're just gonna pull up the presentation and. And then are you gonna make it or?
No, usually we have, it's a replica of what we did last time, so Cindy, hold on, Cindy, go through it.
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
So just to um catch everybody up to speed on this. The last one that we talked about was a conditional use where you only needed one vote. To make a motion for that conditional use for the central home for NITAT. So this is a little bit more of a complicated development question, because we are actually asking you to change the zoning bylaw. To change a lot that is designated as residential to turn it into a, to turn it into a commercial. So that involves two things, the first thing is our zoning bylaw and our community plan go hand in hand. The community plan, moving forward, drives how we zone and what type of zoning we do for our lots. So in order to make this change, we have to change two documents, the first one being the community plan. That then allows us to incorporate the changing in the zone. So because this requires a change to the community plan as well as a change to the zoning bylaw. We need to have three readings. In order to get to the third reading, we have to go through a couple of different processes. So tonight, what we are asking you to do is make a motion for the first reading of this. Once you make that made motion for the first reading for both these two documents that are gonna be coming be before you. We then have a two week period where we have to give notification to the public as well as the neighboring. Lots or the neighboring, the neighbors. And uh we have to give two weeks, we have to give public notification notification um via our Facebook. We're gonna be posting it in the the uh conspicuous locations such as the post office. And uh we have to put it into two editions of our newspaper, so that is the public notice. So two weeks from now, which will be the next set of council meetings, we have to have a public consultation. So that public consultation will be the next set of council meetings at six P M. To allow any public consultation if anybody opposes what we are proposing. If there's no issues, then at the next set of council meetings, you do a second reading. That second reading, once you've approved that, you've confirmed we've done public consultation. That then needs to go to the minister's office for approval, because that ties into our community plan. So the minister's office is well aware that this is coming, hopefully that turnaround will be very quick. Uh once they give their approval for those amendments to the community plan and the zoning bylaw, it then comes back to us. I anticipate the December eleventh council meeting, that you will then do it to third reading. So that's kind of a process, it's much more complicated than just a simple um conditional use. It, we're actually changing a bylaw and that bylaw and that community plan does need ministerial approval to pass. Okay, so that's kind of the process that we have to go through for this. So this is what we are talking about, so this is the old Eskimo Inn lots. The, sorry, the hotel on Mackenzie Street, that is zoned commercial. You can allow a hotel to go there. The plan on the back side, this lot here is zoned residential. So it's an R two, which means you can put an apartment building there, but not a commercial hotel. So what we are proposing. There's, there's an aspect as well as, um this was already, the old Eskimo Inn had buildings there. That served as part of the hotel, but because back in the day, this was not rezoned, we now have to rezone it. If it was just modifications to this, we could have allowed it, but because there is no more building there, we are building a brand new building. It's now brought to our attention that this needs to be rezoned. So the Mackenzie side, not a problem. This is the R two zone that we are proposing is made commercial. To allow what the IRC wants to do is, this is the main hotel, there's gonna be a bridge across. There's gonna be more hotel components and then the rest of this is going to be parking. To put this into perspective, this here is Nija Apartments, so this is Tanunik here, this is Nija. This is the Tanunik Apartments, this is Mountain View and Twin Lakes. So the neighbors, there is nothing existing right now, people are just using it as a parking lot anyway. Uh even though it's allotted that way. So what we need to do is we need to change the community plan to then change this lot. Into a commercial to allow the bridging of the hotel from Mackenzie Road onto Tanunik as well. Does anybody have any questions about what I just described?
Yeah, so that means it would be that lot specifically, though, nothing else in.
Nothing else, no, it's just this lot, yes. It it's this, almost this, a very similar foot footprint to what the old Eskimo Inn was, that real lot.
Any other questions or clarifications before? Do you guys want to do any other presentations or you're just here to ask, answer questions?
We're we're here to answer questions.
Okay.
At this point, more than, more than.
Did I articulate it well enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Probably better than I would have hit the first and second, third readings, so thank you.
Did we get the seconder and the motion on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, pretty sure we did. Good to check, though. Yeah.
So I think this is a question I already know the answer to, I just wanted to confirm it. So there's also a request for a setback variance to zero meters. I'm assuming that's just because the bridge has to straddle the utilidor, so it's gonna be right up to it on both sides.
That is correct. I didn't put that before you yet because it's kind of putting the cart before the horse. You have to approve the zoning change to then allow us to create that variance.
Oh, it's not part of this?
Yeah.
Anyways.
It's more of an information that's coming, but we need the community plan change and we need the zoning bylaw change before we can get to there. And I just didn't want to make it overly complicated on your first council meeting.
No worries. And I guess the only other question I have, so is this actually gonna be part of the Marriott chain?
Yes.
Wow.
Like, you have the schematic or the, like, the image in your.
Yeah.
Come from today.
Yeah, so I hadn't realized.
Like, if you stay at, there's one right by the Edmonton Airport.
Yeah, well, they're all over the world, so it's kind of exciting to have an international hotel chain come to our little town.
Any other further questions on the changing or the zoning? Councillor McDonald.
Sure, just a quick question. I didn't ask, I'm probably gonna see other help to do, but from what I can see, the lobby is not labeled, like, you.
It. I can see, I can sense the schematic, so the very front part is going to be geared towards food and front dining, but there, there, there's a front entrance. But in the back, there's the L on the corner.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
There's an entrance there and your front desk would be kind of just right in the middle of the, the hall.
Yeah, so there's two entrances, one on Mackenzie directly and then one where the parking lots are.
We could have the schematic in the package on page fifty-eight.
Yeah. No, no, but and then, and then my question actually, when somebody checks in, so down. Do they have to drive?
I only included this, it's not.
Oh.
So there's an entrance here, right, right on Mackenzie, and then there's like a loading zone right here. And then there'll be the reception lobby areas right here in the middle. So there's an entrance on Mackenzie and then an entrance sort of off the side serving the loading, serving as a loading zone entrance.
So where do you park and then come into the hotel?
Uh, there are parking areas here. Uh, that's the short-stay parking and then there are fifty lot parking spaces here and here.
Doesn't have to go around the.
Yes.
Well, I think that was, that was my question. If you had to drive to the downtown floor and use that residential area to get parking, you said fifty?
Fifty parking lot spaces.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything else we? Okay, those in favor of the passing the motion, motion carried. So that's nine, one, and nine, two is very similar, well, it's getting motion, well, nine, two is very similar except it's addressing the bylaw, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So mover and seconder, moved by Councillor McDonald, seconded by Councillor Lemieux. Any further information needed on this? It's, it's the exact same development, same project. It's now we have to also change the bylaw.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Okay. So those in favor, motion carried. Okay, so that's.
If I can just explain, so moving forward now, two weeks from now, at the next council meeting, at six o'clock, we are gonna have the public consultation. And then during your council meeting, you will do second reading. It will then go off to the minister, get their approval.
Approved.
Yes.
It'll go off to the minister.
Yes.
Yeah. And so we will be advertising that tomorrow morning in order to leave our two weeks.
Yes.
In the complex. Okay. Um. See, I know this is jumping ahead of the, practically for the horse, but in discussions with IRC, we have checked with the utilidor people as far as scheduling on that construction. And they cannot begin utilidor work in that area between the two components, probably until June, because the first thing they need to do is to set up a temporary water and sewer, and there cannot be freezing temperatures at that time. So we'll be in do further discussions with the contractor. We've already budgeted that some of that work was supposed to have been done this year, but they got caught up on the Carmichael Hill there, and so they didn't get the work done. But they're committed to getting at that first thing as soon as the snow's gone and we've got warm enough temperatures. So I know that was a discussion on timing of construction.
Yeah, I see the fighting stage by, by time, which is nice to have it here. I think that timeline is far greater than I discussed, but it is what it is at this point, so we'd like to get some clarity just so we can plan, so we can get some pilings in the ground and get our construction figured out.
Problem is, they can't put the pilings in the ground until they take out the existing utilidor. They can't do that until they set up the temporary, so that's, that's the catch. Yeah, and there's just no other room there to work with, so they have to take out the existing and then put in the, put in the pilings, and so that's, that's the time crunch. But it's not a huge section, so they should be able to do it fairly quickly, but it does mean June, July, maybe part of August. Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to make a review. There had been that question on when they would be, when we would be replacing that, that utilidor in that specific spot. Okay, moving along in the agenda. We are at eleven. Oh, we don't have department updates.
No, there are no department updates and the, the next one's coming up in eleven. Our information items to decide to introduce what the committees are, and then on the twenty-seventh, we will be going to do.
So there's a number of committees that councils sit on in order to have discussions with staff on moving things forward. And so we've identified some of the, well, all of those committees here and what we'd like everyone to do, and we can the S A O will briefly go through the, through the different committees, but would then like everybody to think about those, and then when we come back to council in, later in November, then we'll assign committee members to those. So the idea with the committees is looking at where your strengths are and where you'd like to put your, your energy and and then getting on those committees so we can have the discussion whether it's some of the infrastructure or some of the recreation programs or whatever it is that the committee is dealing with. And, and then, then those recommendations are made to council as a whole, and then those, those decisions are made. The committees do not issue tenders or food tenders or anything like that at a discussion level. So that, that also eliminates conflicts of interest, so you know, you don't have to be excused from a committee because, you know, we're talking about, you know, drainage and we're talking about plumbing and, and you happen to have a contract because of a plumbing issue or a plumbing company, at the committee level, it's, it's, it's higher, and then after that, the, the projects would, if approved, would go, would go to tender, so, yeah. So that's the idea of, of the committees, and you wanna just give a, a brief overview and, and then councillors will be able to read over the information in the next years.
Yes, so to reiterate what Mayor Clarkson had said, the committees are, if you're gonna be sitting on, on a committee, you're the council champion for that. So you're kind of the conduit, you're asking if I, you know, the lens you want to look at is if I was to make a decision, do I have the information, what information does the committee need to grant? The other thing is, we're, we're very cognizant, if, if in the past it has kind of slid into, is this a conflict or not because you're trying to shape something, we will identify what it is and that discussion will not occur with regard to any conflict of interest on the committee. We just need to be open, transparent to everybody. So a couple of the committees that we'd be looking at, the first one is the Bylaw Review Committee. That is probably in my mind, one of the most important ones because the bylaw is what sets the stage. These are the, the bylaws that direct how council wants us to operate. So that could be everything from a code of conduct like council conduct, as well as our zoning bylaw, as well as pretty much every, everything in terms of how the town operates, how the town would deal with certain situations is set out in the bylaw. The other consideration is this is high-level, high-level. So in terms of the bylaw, it wouldn't be getting into the weeds, that's why we have policies. So this is more of an overarching, this is the direction the town wants to take, and this is the legal framework that we can operate on. So off the top of my head, I'm gonna say there's probably about six bylaws? Oh, sorry. No, there's probably about twenty to thirty bylaws that we would be reviewing. Some of them are outdated. We have a review schedule that we will share. Sometimes it's just part of a review schedule, like you'll see some of our bylaws are two thousand and fifteen, so they should have been probably reviewed a little sooner than this. So there, there is a revision cycle that's also mandated by legislation, and then there may be ad hoc amendments because we realize that bylaw doesn't suit the town's needs anymore, and we might have to revise that or lessons learned, things happen. Now we need to address the bylaw to, to work that. So it is an important, it, it's good to have some legal framework or if you are interested in learning about the legal frameworks and legislation, this is certainly the way, the way to do it. We are doing it in isolation. We also use a, a legal firm that understands legislation as well and makes recommendations as to how to apply it. So it meets quarterly or more often if council determines that we want to have it more often. The next one is the Public Works Committee, again, that is talking about infrastructure, everything from infrastructure to public services. Roads, waste, the landfill site, the utilidor, the maintenance. So not only the operating, so O and M of our public works, but also projects. So our infrastructure and our capital projects. So it's more of a, an information session there and, and certainly getting some guidance, directions. That's an opportunity as a councillor where you can ask questions to go, that makes sense, or what about this? So we certainly appreciate that. The Bylaw Review Committee is the mayor and myself. The Public Works Committee would be a councillor and Director DeBona, who isn't here right now. He would be leading that public works. So each of these bylaw, or each of these committees are going to have a director, a, a, a direct impact. The director of that part. Certainly, the next one is Economic Development and Tourism. Again, is it monthly or for three months, quarterly? Yeah, quarterly. That is setting the strategic direction. That would be Director Berryier, who would be leading that in collaboration with a councillor with regard to economic development, tourism, everything from supporting businesses to bringing businesses in and, and that type of stuff is what she would be working with on. The next one is the Road Naming Committee, or sorry, the Naming Committee, which includes renaming roads or parks. This is one that I think we have really benefited from over the years, particularly towards truth and reconciliation as well. An example of this was Jacquesche, which used to be the old Ryant. It's usually driven by community members to say, I'm really not comfortable with the name of that road because it brings something up or it's really not relevant to Anuvi. I'd like to propose something different. So that committee is comprised of councillors as well as community members. And that, those proposed changes come forward, it's reviewed, we have kind of a, a stock list of possible names. And from there, it's determined, one, is it relevant? Two, should we be changing it? And three, what do we want to change it to? So it's, it's a great committee to sit on. It's, it's a feel-good committee, definitely. The next one is the Lottery Committee. The Lottery Committee meets twice a year, and that is to basically set out the policy of how we administer Bingos, Nevadas, Chase the Aces, raffles and that type of thing. To clarify, this is in-town and tangible lotteries. We have no authority over Facebook lotteries because we are not the FBI and we do not have I P addresses. So how can we prove that the person was actually in Anuvi when they did the lottery? That is one thing that has been a challenge sometimes. People will be taken advantage of with an online raffle, but we have no say in that. So that is only the, the raffles and the lotteries that we administer. And basically, you're meeting twice, twice a year, and that's to duke out who gets what, what bingo. And over, you're duking it up, trust me.
That's dramatic.
And the final one, which we're reintroducing, this hadn't been, over the past couple of councils, we hadn't had a Finance and Administration Committee. And both Mayor Clarkson and myself felt that it was good and relevant to, to bring back the Finance and Administration. So that's primarily corporate services, asking questions about where our finances are, providing some direction and some insights. Do we want to pursue a particular project? And if so, what kind of granting and funding and, and how we would operate that. So again, they are all in your packages. We will be asking you in the next set of meetings, which is the twenty eighth of November, or sorry, twenty-fifth of November is our committee of the whole, and then the twenty-seventh, we will be asking which councillors want to sit on which committees.
So the twenty-fifth will give you a chance to ask further questions at the committee of the whole, but then we'll make the decisions on the Wednesday or the twenty. Councillor Merrill.
Certainly thought of bringing back the Parks and Recreation Committee, which existed for many, many years and is a great help and is a developing Parks and Recreation Committee.
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification, or sorry, not clarification, but just a little historical. My understanding is.
Kind of call out for, for people that's on the board and they're making forward, so they kind of just fall, fall off.
So that was a call out for community members to sit on the board.
Yeah, we're a new better council, we'll find some people.
Right.
That was a one-time thing. I mean, over the years, it's, it's changed, but the one time, it used to ping, it appeared to be on the board.
Is that a committee that you want to add then?
Why don't we do this? We'll I don't have a lot of time. We'll, we'll pull up the previous terms of reference and we'll send that out to everybody. And probably what we will do is Parks, Parks Recreation and Leisure Services, so basically include Midnight Sun and Confex, the library and, and all the parks within the town, because I, I think you're right, that, that a useful, was a useful committee in the past and, and also it gives those staff a chance to get together with councillors, maybe community members. So we'll, we'll add that and then we'll make that decision in, in two weeks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything further on committees? Okay, so that, that's an information item, so we will come, come back to those. So now we're at item number twelve. Council comments, are there any any comments that the councillors want to bring up at this time, ask questions, make announcements, any, anything that that you can think of that you would like to bring up? I have a few information items I'll, I'll bring up, but I wanted, wanted to give the councillors the opportunity first to. I have a few information items I'll, I'll bring up, but I wanted, wanted to give the councillors the opportunity first to. Mention anything. Councillor Barak?
I'll jump in, so just congratulations to all here on the table and looking forward to working with them for the next three years, so. It's exciting times.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Barak. Anything from anyone else? Okay, just some information items, then the um. December fourteenth, for those of you who haven't heard, that's when the Christmas parade will be in town. Uh, we are looking for a Santa Claus, some of you may have heard, Gord Sims has left town. We don't want to cancel Christmas because Santa Claus is gone, but we uh do need to replace uh Santa Claus, so. If you know of a good candidate, tell you want to dye your beard, you know, white instead of red.
The belly.
We, we, we are actively looking for a new Santa, Gord has been the Santa for years, so uh. We do need to find another Santa. I've uh talked to the high school, as you'll see, there's a space here. This space hasn't been filled since before COVID or maybe I think Matea might have been the last student councillor. Um, what the town does, uh, we let the school elect, appoint a student councillor. Who sits here as an ex-official councillor, but we um. They're sitting at council or being on committees or whatever they happen to do for town. Those funds go into a bursary up to five thousand dollars, uh, depending on how many meetings or how long they serve. And then that is given to the student for uh post-secondary education. So hopefully in the new year, uh, we'll also have a student councillor. Um, having discussions with the principal and then the um, teacher that is responsible for student council. So I'll go over to the school, make a presentation on what town council does and why we want some youth representation. But the youth rep would be an ideal uh councillor for the uh Recreation and Leisure Services, for example. So anyway, we hope to fill that chair. Um. I don't know if any of you attended, because they, they, I think they were also talking to the various indigenous uh, uh, groups. But uh Shell was in town, did a um, um, you know, public open house. As far as Shell doing remediation work, it looks like probably in the next year, their assessment work um in, in the area. Will be around ten million and then once they decide what work they have to do. Could be fifty, sixty, seventy million dollars worth of work, so uh, they plan to be quite active. And they're only one of the companies doing remediation work, so. Remediation uh by the oil companies, by the power corp, by other people that have to clean up some sites. Is probably going to be a fairly strong economic driver in the area uh in, in, in the foreseeable future. So that will bring some new money into the community and into the region. Um. Oh, I, I was in touch with Travis Beleski. He's the head of the Anuvik Petroleum Corporation. And just asked him if we would be able to get a meeting on the M eighteen natural gas development and what that will mean for the community. As far as uh, producing compressed gas and bringing it to Anuvik, bringing it to Tuck. Uh, but what will that mean for our natural gas prices and cost of living and all of those things? So he's looking at some potential dates, we provided the schedule and when we meet, but he would come in and make a fifteen minute presentation. And then be, we'd be able to ask any questions on what the timing would be and, and what that may mean for the town. So we should be able to get a little bit more information on that. And. Oh, this is one, have to check on whether this date works. Couple of the councillors have said, we don't know many of the town staff, we have a, just a meet and greet over lunch sometimes. So we're looking at Friday, November twenty nine. And we would probably go from noon till two. We would, would invite all of the town staff, uh, probably at the uh Midnight Sun Complex up in the Community Lounge. Um, and it would be a, a pizza, lunch and uh, staff would be there. We would go there as mayor and councillor and it would just be an opportunity to meet town staff. Does the, I guess the twenty nine. Does that, you're, are you in town? Oh, okay, so that, that's right, you leave afterwards, yeah, okay. Is there anybody that the twenty nine doesn't work for? Well, you're out of town. You probably know most of the staff.
I think so.
Okay. Does the twenty ninth work for everybody else? We got, you know, hour and a half, two hours, but just an opportunity to meet with the staff. And uh, we, we do a round of introduction so that everybody knows who's who and what they do and, as well as get to know you also. Because we'll, we're going to be all one team. Okay, so it looks like the twenty ninth will work, we'll go ahead and uh, do that, but send out notices to everyone. That this is what we're planning on doing. And the last thing I've been working on, if you're trying to get a flight out of here or a hotel in Yellowknife, it's almost been impossible. Because of all the medical and dental travel, so I've been in contact with the dentist in Yellowknife who would like to come up uh. And set up in Anuvik, um, so we'll. The, the biggest challenge is, is finding space, so um. And, and space that's available now, not space that's available in two years. And so uh, he's actively looking and, and talking to some of the property owners, but uh. Have been assisting them in uh, in some contacts who, who may own some property that they could um, purchase and see what they could do. But we do need dental service in Anuvik, so hopefully something happens there sooner than later. Flying people out for dental has been a nightmare and it cost me. There's millions of dollars uh being spent doing that. One family in two weeks, their travel and accommodations is over thirty thousand and that's just one family.
Holy shit.
Yeah. So I, I know there's been some discussions with some of the other landowners in town, office owners about potential space, so. Hopefully we get something going because from what I've heard, the existing clinic is not. Offerable anymore and those stores probably won't ever be open. Will be demolished probably before that, those stores are old.
Anybody got spare room in their back warehouse and all or hook up some plumbing?
That's everything I have, unless there's any other questions, comments? Point of the night where we need to be motion to adjourn.